All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to Oviedo City Council Chambers. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands in one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief Coleman, can you lead us in an invocation?
Good evening, members of council. If you'd like to pray with me, please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we just want to give you thanks for this day, for the news, the continued success in overcoming this pandemic that we're moving in a good direction. We thank you for all the protection, the blessings. We ask for your continued protections on those that are still out and about and are exposed, all of us that are here involved, those that have been and those that suffered from it. We ask for your prayers, your blessings, and just wrap them in your arms. We ask that you provide council with the wisdom to do the business of the city that the citizens respect and honor and support their council and their decisions. We ask that you protect those that travel here, those that are watching online, that you bless them and protect them in everything they do. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting order. It's Monday, May 18th at approximately 6:30 PM. We have all members of council present. First order of business is a presentation item, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for fiscal year ending September 30, 2019. How's it going, Mr. Boop?
Very good. Mr. Chairman, how are you, sir?
Doing well.
Honorable Mayor, Mr. Chairman, council members, like was announced, what you have before you tonight is a presentation of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for fiscal year 2019, otherwise known as the CAFR. Madeline, if you can, please flip to the page that says Financial Statement Components, and we'll start right there. If you haven't had a chance to read very much of the CAFR yet, what I would suggest that you read are two important pieces, the Letter of Transmittal, as it includes information about the local economy, and Significant Staff Accomplishments. Also, I would suggest that you read the Management's Discussion and Analysis, also known as the M-DNA, because it provides you a very high overview of the results of the entire city. Madeline, if you can, please forward to the General Fund Cash Balances. We thought it was important to give you a historical perspective of the General Fund Cash Balances. I started back in 2012, and when I started, we ended the year with $2.84 million in available cash. During that year, we had several opportunities to improve our cash position. One such was that we had seven debt issuances that were outstanding, that were a financial drain to the General Fund. We refinanced all those issuances, resulting in about a $2.3 million cash savings to the General Fund and general government activities. The annual savings was about $203,000, $204,000 a year, which actually ended up balancing the budget in fiscal year 2013. As you can see from those cash balances, very low, we were concerned about, again, our cash balance, or another term we call liquidity. So in 2013, with the help of Mr. Cobb, what we did is we sought the open market and went after a letter of credit facility. And the letter of credit facility was made available to us so that just in case we had some sort of an anomaly, like a hurricane or what have you, we would have access to additional cash if we needed to during the early years, the low cash years. You can see in 2014, our cash balances improved somewhat. And going into 2015, when we brought Oviedo on the park online, our cash balances improved significantly. That's the year where we actually matured, if you will, the letter of credit. We took out approximately $2.6 billion for completion of Oviedo on the park, another $415,000 to assist with the completion of some of the recreation facilities, and the remainder went to the completion of the new fire station. In 2016, cash balances again improved slightly, but the big change was really in 2017. In 2017, we made a concerted effort to be a little bit more conservative with the budget process. By that, I mean we stopped using nonrecurring revenues to cover recurring expenses. Nonrecurring revenues meaning contributions from funds that contribute from time to time to the General Fund, such as the building fund. Nonrecurring revenues meaning interest income, which has been very unreliable, so to speak, especially in the early years. We started out in 2012, 2013, earning 10 basis points. And in 2017, we saw the interest rates start to increase. So we benefited from those conservative budgeting methodologies. Right now, as you may well know, our interest rates at one time were about 3.4% with some of the investments that we had. We're now trending back down towards that 10-basis-point environment. We should be there before the end of the year. Moving forward to 2018, again, we saw a considerable increase in cash balances, and that's with the payouts that we had related to Hurricane Irma. In 2019, which is the most recent financial year, we had a significant increase in our cash balances, and that was directly related to reimbursements from FEMA and FDEM related to Hurricane Irma for about $700,000. In addition to that, we also had significant increases in our utility taxes, as well as our franchise fees of almost $500,000. Last year, we also carried a significant vacancy factor, which contributed about $715,000 in savings expenses to the General Fund. That rounds out to about the $2 million increase that we had in cash last fiscal year. Next slide, please. Looking at the General Fund revenues by source, starting at the top, looking at intergovernmental, those finished at about $4.9 million, and those include the half-cent sales tax revenue sharing. The charges for services includes the SRO reimbursements from Seminole County, ambulance revenues, as well as recreation revenues that finished at about $3 million. Looking at adblocker taxes, that's the big contributor to the General Fund, that finished at $13.3 million. Utility taxes fall into the other tax category that increased significantly. That also includes communications tax, that finished at 4.8. And lastly, license and permits and fees, which includes franchise fees from the electric utility, finished at about $2.8 million. Next slide, please. Looking at the expense side, looking at it from a clockwise perspective, Parks and Rec finished last year at $5.8 million in expenses. General Government, which is comprised of HR, city clerk, finance, IT, city manager, and development services, finished about $4.6 million. Public Safety, which is comprised of police, fire, and code enforcement, finished at $15.4 million. Of that, police was 8.9, and fire was 6.3, with code enforcement being the remainder. Physical Environment, which includes Public Works, was $1.5 million. Next slide, please. Looking at this, this is a picture of the net income and loss year over year, and you can see back in 2012, we had a significant loss of about $463,000. And again, going back and look at these things historically, you can see the impact of refinancing those notes back in 2012 that it had on the General Fund year over year. And again, when we look at the net income loss, revenue was up, $1.2 million, salaries were down by $715,000 roughly, and the remainder was operational expense savings. Next slide, please. Looking at this slide, it shows you the unassigned fund balance in the General Fund, and the orange line represents what the city policy is at 15%. You can see in 2012, we were slightly below that number. We rounded out to 15% as we actually had 14.53% that year, which rounded up to 15%. So as you can see, we have a very solid unassigned fund balance at the end of the fiscal year. Any questions about the General Fund? Looking at the proprietary funds, Madeline, if you can go forward a couple slides. Water and Sewer, cash balances are extremely strong. A couple of years ago, we had what I would call one of the best budget meetings I think that I've ever had in my 40-year-plus career. We sat down with the good folks over in Public Works, and we heard about all the improvements that they wanted to make to their enterprise funds and so on. So what we did is we delved into the renewal and replacement funds, and so you can see year over year the result of using the renewal and replacement funds for the significant reinvestment that they made back into their plant and equipment. Next slide, please. Water and Sewer Funds, revenue and expenses by source. It's no secret that operating revenues are the majority of the revenues that flow into the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. Looking over at the uses, the expenses, transfers out total $2.5 million. The cost of sales was $6.8 million. Administration was $1.8 million. Interest expense was $1.7 million. Depreciation was $3.8 million. And depreciation expense, although it's not a cash item, represents the ongoing wear and tear of the use of the plant and equipment year over year. Next slide, please. Looking at the unrestricted net position, the unrestricted net position in the Water and Sewer Fund ended at a very solid $15.1 million. Any questions about the Water and Sewer Utility? Okay, going on to the Stormwater Fund. Stormwater Fund, we've had a few challenges. As you know, as a result of Hurricane Irma, there were washouts at Little Creek and Live Oak. The refurbishment of both of those ponds cost approximately $400,000. We are still waiting reimbursement from FEMA for placing those ponds back in order. In addition to that, going back to 2004, the water table has elevated significantly following the hurricanes Charlie Jean and Francis. But when you pile on top of that, the impact of Hurricane Irma, which contributed well over 17 inches of rain here in a very short time period, in the ongoing wet years after that, has created a lot of challenges for the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, meaning that they've had to reinvest significant amount of monies back into their infrastructure. Last year, we put about $400,000 back into the infrastructure to basically reline pipes and things of that nature. Next slide, please. Looking at the Stormwater Fund revenues and expenses, they had operating revenues of $2.5 million. Ongoing stormwater operation expenses were $1.1 million. Transfers out were $565,000. Interest expense, $137,000. And again, depreciation, wear and tear on ongoing plant and equipment, $827,000. Next slide, please. Looking at the Stormwater Fund, the unrestricted net position ended at $739,000 last year, but again, we're watching this very, very closely, and we're looking at the ongoing impact of the high-water table as well. So there's something that we may need to consider there going forward. Next slide, please. Twin Rivers Golf Course, cash balances, the first year it was started up, the last two years basically represent probably where we're going to land year over year, somewhere between the $50,000 and $100,000 in available cash. Next slide, please. Looking at their financial results for the year, they had $1.39 million in operating revenues against $1.429 in operating expenses, and they had a very slight loss last year of $37,000. There was a contribution to their fund, $50,000, so they had a slight increase in net position of $12,877. Any questions about the golf course financial results?
Not the golf course, but just the, you're talking about reimbursement from FEMA.
Yes.
Is that the same controversy that's going on with trying to get reimbursement from FEMA, was that around 2011?
No, this is totally separate. This is related to Irma.
To Irma, okay.
2011 is related to Hurricane Charlie.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Okay. Next slide, please. Looking at long-term debt. Long-term debt, basically, we like to give you a summary of that every single year. For 2019, we finished the year for the General Fund at $17.8 million compared to the year before of $20.7 million. What's important to note is if you look at the very top, the general obligation bond of 2003, the general obligation note, those have their own funding source, which is the GEO tax that we have, the mortgage rate that we have on our tax bills every year. The remaining outstanding notes are funded by non-adblocker tax revenues of the General Fund, with the exception of the landfill post-closure care. So when we talk about the actual funds that are used out of the General Fund to fund that, predominantly, it's the other notes and not, obviously not, the GEO note. Looking at the business type activities, we finished the year for 2019 at $51.9 million compared to last year of $54.1 million. 2019 total debt was $69.7 million compared to 2018 of $74.8 million. So you can see by that comparison that we're paying off our outstanding debt by approximately $5 million per year. Next slide, please. This slide was prepared and inserted this year, just to give you a five-year outlook, if you will, on the gradual decline of outstanding debt. And again, what this shows is that we pay off about $5 million per year, with the exception of 2019 and '20, slight increase, and that reflects the lease that we just approved at the beginning of April, which was about $1.34 million. Any questions about debt before I move on? In summary, last page, we had a very solid performance for fiscal year 2018 and '19. The financial condition of the city is stable. We have an underlying rating from Standard and Poor's, which is extremely important in our current environment. Our GEO bonds is currently rated at double A minus, outlook stable. Utility bonds are double A, outlook stable. We have a senior lien debt service coverage for the utilities of 2.34. The bond covenant documents require at least 1.1, so a very solid position for the utility. In this last year, we received the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. That was the 28th year in a row. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might possibly have before I turn over to the auditors.
Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I've just got the one. I noticed that the Water Sewer interest, but the percentage used for interest was 10.38%. How on earth could that be? Or is that a typo?
Where did you see that? What part of the presentation?
There was a slide with a pie chart. Let me pop over there. One, two, three. So pass the General Fund. I can't tell what slide number this is. It looks like right in the middle.
Yes, that's interest expense. That is on the expense side, so that's a use, and that was the percentage of interest to the total expenses in the Water and Sewer Utility. It was actually paid out as interest expense on the outstanding debt.
So we just have a lot of debt for the Water Sewer. Am I understanding that correctly?
There is debt in the Water Sewer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Okay. Ms. Painter?
I think she's going to wipe down the mic and everything for you.
Good evening. Helen Painter, audit partner with Purvis Gray Company. And here with me this evening is Matt White. He is your audit manager for the audit for the City of Oviedo. I'd like to start with, I believe, there's our slide presentations. Thank you. We are your new CPA firm, and we are honored to be part of the city. You just had a good overview with your finance director to see that, you know, overall, all of the funds of the city did fairly well this year. You know, you ended up in a better financial position than you were in the prior year, and I think that'll be important as we go through the audit report and where we are today. Change sides, please. I want to just talk about an audit, especially if anyone is new on the city council. The scope and purpose of an audit, all local governments are required to have an annual financial audit. It's not a performance audit, it's a financial audit to ensure that you are in compliance with governmental accounting standards. And also, the State of Florida Auditor General's office requires all local governments to have an annual audit, and your year-end is September 30th. So that's the main purpose of the audit, but also, this audit report is used to send to the secondary bond markets, where Mr. Boop was talking about, because you all have outstanding debt, and there are individuals or brokerage houses that have bought the debt for the City of Oviedo. They want to make sure that they're going to get their debt payments. So you all have to pay the bondholders or the brokerage houses, so they want to make sure that the city is in good financial position. Also, for the GFOA Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, so that's a certificate that says that you've met the highest standards of financial reporting, that all of the information included in this report is accurate, and you've met all the disclosures. And this year, you haven't had one in a while, but you had a federal single audit. You received federal grant monies for Hurricane Irma, and we had to do additional compliance work with that. So that's the purpose of the audit. Next slide, please. So I believe that you all have the bound copy, but also you have the report in your package. Our purpose is to issue an independent auditor's report, and that is on page 35. And in this report, we are saying that we have audited the financial statements of the City of Oviedo for the year ending September 30, 2019. It goes on to talk about management's responsibility for the financial statement, what the auditor's responsibility is. And you'll see that in this report, that it is addressed to the Honorable Mayor and city council members, and so that's who CPA firm answers to ultimately. And in this report, we are issuing what we call an unmodified opinion, which is the highest opinion that you can obtain. So that's a clean audit opinion. We also would need to let you know if there was any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control, and we're happy to say that there were none. Also, if there was any issues with your major federal programs or any other items that rose to the level that we needed to have written down and that management would need to respond to, and we had no material items like that. We do, next slide, please, want to point out something that's probably most significant, and I don't want to belabor this point, but there are COVID-19 considerations that you have to think about for the city. In this report, we wrapped it up in the month of March, and that's when everything happened. Right when we were getting ready to issue, everything got shut down, and of course, we had to put everything on the back burner. But what this might mean to the city, if you look up here at this slide, you'll see that there could be potential financial economic impacts to the city. And that's to any entity in the world right now, if you think about all of the concerns. Right now, the city ended up in such a good position that you have reserves in place, but the future is still unknown, and so we had to report that in the audit report, that there is the consideration that COVID-19 could affect the city economically. So you have to take that in consideration. And we've reported this in the auditor's report as an emphasis of a matter. We've disclosed it, and we've put it in a letter to governance that, you know, just be aware that this could happen. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Did anyone have any questions on that?
We're, excuse me, we're no different from any other
That's right.
...entity, so it's not like we're alone, whatever.
No.
So everybody else will be affected just as we are.
That's right. And you just have to think of it that way. The good news with the City of Oviedo is that you have reserves in place, and in most of your funds, your liquidity, your investments that you had are very liquid, so there's not going to be a significant fair value decrease because the markets are not quite as valuable as they have been. But your pension plans also are heavily invested. So those are some areas where the fair value, the investments could drop. A lot of times, when the fair value, the investments drop, that means the actuaries say you need to contribute more funds in. So there's a lot of moving parts here, but again, every entity in the country is affected by COVID-19. And we know that our federal government has been helping individuals with the stimulus checks that were sent out. That is a way that people have been helped. Small businesses and small 501(c)(3)'s have been helped with the PPP loan program, the SBA, you've probably read about that, where a lot of individual companies, if they didn't lay off their workers, they were able to get loan funds. So now we're waiting to see if the federal government is going to help state and local governments. So that is what is, that we are expecting. We see a little bit through specific grant fundings, if a local government had to, if they had ambulance services, they could have gotten additional money there. There's just different ways that we're waiting on to see if the federal government is going to help local governments. So that is the next step, which is under the CARES Act. So I think you can probably see that, you know, in your own lives and what you've seen and read about, and how it could affect the city. Next slide, please. We had an exit meeting at the conclusion of our audit with management and throughout the interim. So we came out for a week in the month of October. So we came out for a week in the month of October, and then we came out the month of December for another week. And we were waiting on a few documents, specifically the actual reports. And we had a few recommendations that did not rise to the level of reporting in here. But overall, we found that the city management is under the supervision of CPAs. They understand governmental accounting. They understand, you know, to be prudent with the funds of the city, and they've built up nice reserves, and they were just a pleasure to work with. So we were happy to report that there was nothing significant that we found during our audit. And next slide. There is a separate letter that is in the package and is not part of the audit report. It is called the Communication with Those Charged with Governance. If you needed to see that. This is going to let you know of some upcoming accounting standard changes. There's different aspects in this report. We would have to let you know if the accounting records are in such bad shape that we had to do a lot of adjustments, and that was not the case. We would have to let you know if there's any difficulties with management, and that was not the case. There are some new accounting standards that have coming out. They have been delayed because of COVID-19. They're pushing it back another year. There is a new statute, with the Florida statutes regarding your building department fund, whereas you're not allowed to build up reserves with that. We believe that the city is already in compliance. And also for next year, your CRA is going to be required to have its own standalone audits. CRAs have been scrutinized quite a bit. They want to make sure that the incremental tax monies in a CRA is only spent in that CRA. So that's, they want us to do additional work on that. So that's what's upcoming. Next slide, please. Overall, I'd like to have Matt conclude the audit presentation. And take your way.
Well, Helen did all the heavy lifting, so I'll keep this brief. I just want to at least introduce myself. My name is Matthew Gano. I'm the audit manager for the engagement. I work closely with the city staff, particularly Jerry and Kelly, as well as other department heads throughout the city. And really just want to take this opportunity to thank the staff. They're professional, courteous, responsive. Y'all really have a great team that y'all have here at the city. So just kind of want to thank them for everything that they do. And I think that's pretty much, for the most part, just wrap it up. And if there's any questions, we'll be willing to answer those.
Does anybody have any questions for the auditors? All right. I think we're good. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right. We're up to the, oh, hold on. We'll wait for the mic to be clean.
Oh, are they leaving? I wanted to say something before they left.
Oh, well.
I didn't have a question.
Oh, okay.
Jerry.
Jerry.
I don't have a question. I just want to thank you for all the work you've done. And I think you came in on the tale, and I'm the only one up here that went through the last real economic crisis at the end of the 2000 decade. And it was a very uncomfortable period. I'll just say that. And reading this, I think we're very well positioned to weather the storm that's going to come this year. But it's not going to be easy. And I thank you for the effort you've done, and the staff, and the auditors for bringing this to our attention. But it's, I think we're in a lot better position than we would have been had we not been working diligently to increase our reserves and recover from the last episode.
Thank you for that, Mr. Britton. When Kelly and I, actually Kelly's been just amazing. She's really coordinated the entire audit process for us. I just chip in when I'm needed. But when Kelly and I took over the budget process back in 2017, Mr. Cobb gave us a challenge. And he said, this is yours, you know, and I really want you to take this and run with this and see what you can do with it. So we've done our very best, and it's yielded very positive results for the city. As you can see, we are very well positioned for COVID-19. We have no idea what is out there in front of us, but we are well positioned. We aren't where we were back in 2012 with $2.4 million in available cash. So now our cash reserves exceed about $8 million, and that hopefully will help us weather the impending storm that seems to be in front of us right now. So thank you for that.
Appreciate it.
I also have to say, great job by all the directors. This is not a finance thing. Every single director participates in this process. The only role of finance is to issue the report card. So you see the results on the report card that was just presented to you that basically presents the results of every individual director here in the city. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. Well, she's cleaning the mic. I think we can move on to the next item, the approval of the minutes. Let's see.
I move we approve the minutes.
Got a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. All right, now we're on to item three. Hold on, let me catch up for a second. Public comment. I do have one request. It's from Mr. Abraham Lopez. Just please state your name and address for the record.
Abraham Lopez, 3353 Red Ash Circle. Thank you all for this opportunity, and thank you for going above and beyond to make sure that we can still have our say here despite everything that's going on. It's part of me that I'm reading from my cell phone. I got three minutes, and I want to maximize as much as I can of those three minutes. The COVID-19 pandemic was very fluid, and you guys had to deal with a lot with very little time to make decisions. And this is not only all of you guys on the council, but the city manager, the employees in the city. And I just want to commend you all. I know I've reached out, I think, to all of you at some point in time throughout this pandemic. And it's not easy. I'm sure you're getting pulled and tugged in all directions. Tonight, I wanted to discuss just on briefly two resolutions. The first one is Resolution Number 3917-20, the extension of the declaration of local state of emergency. As I stated earlier, the COVID-19 situation was very fluid, and you guys all acted quickly to flatten the curve and to help ensure that our hospital systems locally were not overburdened. That was the main goal of the flattening of the curve. Thank God, the experts were wrong, right? The experts stated numerous projections. It wasn't just one, it was two, it was three, it was four. And thank God, all the projections were wrong. Here in the state of Florida, and I'm sure you guys know this because the State Department of Health, the county, has been doing a really good job in providing the data to residents. And here in the state of Florida, the odds of you surviving COVID-19 is 99.992%. 99.992%. In all of Seminole County, we just had two new cases, and this is the latest information that was on the county website today. In the county, 468,000 people residing here, 41,000 roughly in the city of Oviedo. To date, there have been 428 positive COVID-19 cases in Seminole County. That's only 0.09% in Seminole County. And if we were to look at the cases here in Oviedo and also Trulioa, we're looking at 0.13%. I believe that history's going to show that while government, from federal government, the state government, and local governments were very, very well intentioned, I think history's going to show that there was a major global overreaction to the data that was presented, right? Because you all were presented with, we all were presented with the data from the coronavirus task force, and everybody responded to that. I believe that according to the best data available now, the emergent need of a declaration is honestly, it's no longer there. I understand financially why some folks choose to do it, to extend and potential federal funds that may come here. Regardless of what's decided tonight on that resolution, I just want to encourage you all to continue, right, to do your best to return this community to normal. I don't know about your children, but my children get freaked out when they see the folks with masks everywhere, right? And mind you, we'll do our part if we're asked to put them on in a certain business. We respect that business, and we'll do that. But I believe again that the numbers, the data that has been shared, no longer justifies the phrase "new normal," and we're going to drastically change our way of life. So I just want to encourage all of you guys tonight to try to quickly return our community back to normal. The last thing I want to talk about tonight, and I'll be quick because I'm sure the clock is ticking, is on Resolution Number 3914-20. That's the work order to allocate to Alcalde and Fay for the federal lobbying. I believe the city's strategy to maximize our influence at the federal level is very well intentioned. We should be doing everything we can to get as much as we can for the taxpayers of the city of Oviedo. After all, it's our money. It's our tax dollars. We just want it back here in Oviedo. That said, I think that to date, unless there's information that's going to be shared tonight, whether it's qualitative and quantitative data to support continuing or extending the existing contract to the tune of $60,000. Look, I, years ago, was very active in advocating for funds for my former town. I've been in Oviedo for about two years. And I know firsthand that members of the governing body and together with constituents and stakeholders, we can effectively influence the legislative process, whether it's at the state level or at the federal level.
Mr. Lopez.
Yep.
I think you, but you had put in a request. So if you want to talk about that more at that item, you know, we can definitely call you back up for that.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Is there anybody else wishing to speak to the council tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Chairman.
Madam Mayor.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second, got a motion and a second. Anybody have any discussion? You can.
Go ahead, Mayor.
To your point, I appreciate the city manager's phraseology when he asked me to come in and sign the extension. He knows me. He said, can you please come and sign this so we can remain eligible for fee of reimbursement? Because my immediate reaction was, there's no more emergency. But because of some of the things that it sounds like you're already aware of, I think it is the appropriate thing at this time.
Judith, you have a second?
No.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't need to pull it. I just want to make mention of the Police Week proclamation. On May 15th, it is Police Memorial Day. So far, as of the 19th of this year, March 19th, there's been 78 law enforcement officers in the state of Florida that have been killed while on duty, and nationwide, 307. The officers are out there every day, especially during this time, and I think we just take time to recognize them and the work they do for our community.
All right. Have anything, Mr. Britton?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Hearing nothing else, we have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have no public hearings, no first reading of ordinances. The next item on the agenda is Item 16, Resolution 39-20, work order for Alcalde and Fay, federal lobbying services. Mr. Cobb, can you provide us with an introduction?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This is a request for city council to approve a work order in the amount of $30,000 to Alcalde and Fay to continue serving the city as professional, as our federal lobbying services through September 20, September 30th of 2020. Call back in November of last year, we executed a work order with Alcalde and Fay to cover us through March, April of this year. That was for $30,000. This work order continues that work through September 30th. It'll be for an additional $30,000. We did budget last year for the entire year, so $60,000 was budgeted for this work. The work order is basically the same as it was back in November. I think probably the biggest thing is right now, they are assisting us with two grant applications. One is through the police department for a cops grant for two additional police officers. The other one is through the assistance of firefighters grant. It's $165,000 for a brush truck to help us with wildfires. And so those are probably the two biggest things that are going on right now. They are keeping us abreast of what's going on in Washington with all the COVID-19 stimulus that are happening with CARES Act, HEROES Act, the other two acts that have been adopted as well. It's recommended that the city council adopt Resolution 3940-20.
All right. We are up to public comment. I've got a request to speak form here. Again, Mr. Abraham Lopez.
Sorry for mixing the two items. Still, as I was saying, I think that you all have the skill sets. I've read all of your bios, which are impressive, to fully represent the residents of Oviedo. I think that developing a good working relationship with our congressional delegation, regardless of party, putting people first beyond partisan politics, I think you guys can really do an effective job. And as Councilman Britton said earlier today, we don't know what's coming down the pike with COVID-19. A lot of residents have been furloughed. And due to the safe and smart and slow reopening plan that we're experiencing statewide, many jobs are not coming back. Just last week, in the state of Florida, 200,000 Floridians applied for unemployment, and this is on top of the 1-plus million that had already applied for unemployment. So I would encourage you all that tonight, let's table that and find a better use for those funds. And maybe there's even some way to indirectly lighten the burden on the taxpayers, whether using that funds for something that you guys normally would have had to, at some way, charge back to the taxpayer. So I hope you guys will consider that. I know a lot of residents say coming forward to speak before the town council is not the best use of time, but I believe tonight you guys can prove that wrong, in the sense that there's folks that always believe that decisions are pre-made. But I think you guys are fully considering what the residents are saying, and I hope tonight you can prove them all wrong. Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. All right. All right, what's the pleasure of council?
Mr. Chairman.
Madam Mayor.
I move we deny Resolution 3914-20.
Do we have a second?
Second for discussion purposes.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Madam Mayor.
We've paid these guys over $350,000 over the last about decade. I have not seen any deliverables, even now. I was on council before, took a year off, came back. I have still heard hide nor hair from these guys, seen no tangible work product. And anytime I call any of our higher up the food chain elected representatives, they are incredibly responsive. So I think what Mr. Lopez mentioned is accurate, at least as to our delegation. So if we are interested in advocating for the fire grant, for any of these other grants, there were some members of this body that did go up to DC to do that in person. If that's something that everybody is interested in, I think that perhaps doing that versus having somebody else claim that they're doing it and us paying them an average of $5,000 per month, and then us also doing that, it's just a lot of redundancies that could be eliminated.
Councilmember Smith?
First of all, I'd like to say that I did meet with Mr. Tony Gray a couple months ago. I got a couple, about total of six emails from citizens, five asking to deny, us to deny this, one particularly from Mr. Lopez, and I want to just address that letter that he wrote. And then one was from Mr. Lopez, and I want to just address that letter that he wrote, and then one was, gave me pros and cons. And just, I'd like to make a request to the citizens that I was so happy to receive the input, but most of the letters said deny it, and they didn't give me anything to think about or to give me an answer of why I should deny it. Mr. Lopez did. He gave me several reasons. He was very methodical, and I appreciate that, and it helped me very much, and you up here helped me very much. Going through the presentation that Mr. Kelly gave to me, also, gave to us, excuse me, was very informative, and I kind of was not sure if we should approve this or not. But going through what the firm has done already, and one particular thing just leaked out at me is that they could possibly be an advocate with the, it was in 2J of Mr. Kelly's presentation, they could advocate on behalf of the city with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for restoration of Lake Jessup. I, my joint counsel, that's one of the committees that I am on, and I was astounded at the condition of Lake Jessup, and that in the future, it's going to affect us. It is affecting us, and that's a project that we need to get on, and one of the entities that we need to be advocating with or contacting is the Army Corps of Engineers, because based on the information I've gotten, they're the only ones that can fix the problem of this lake that's dying. And so when I saw that, that, and I'm not sure if Mr. Lopez was aware of that, so that really kind of made me think that we need that. We need someone to advocate on behalf because Lake Jessup is dying. And so I suggest that we approve this, with one of the caveats being that one of the major things that I'd like to see them advocate for is getting with the Army Corps of Engineers, because based on the information I got, the Army Corps of Engineers caused the problem, and so they need to come back and fix it. So, all right. That's my spiel. Thank you.
Mr. Britton?
Well, you know, we've always said we would make the determination of what we get out of the services rendered versus what we're paying in, and I think we're getting value for that. The way this works is if we have an issue, we go to them, and we just got an example of one. We go to them and say, we need you to go contact the leadership of the Corps of Engineers, which is based in Washington, DC, and see if you can work something, whether it's a policy or whatever, a grant or whatever, to get this lake cleaned up. That's how it works. I'm recalling back during the economic crisis, maybe it was right just before it, we had a water company called, I forget the name of them now, but they were providing terrible service. We went to the lobbies up there. We said, how can we get this? They were owned by a huge company that had no business owning wastewater companies, and we were able to free that up. We paid a premium price for it, which we shouldn't have had to, but they helped us along that process. They've done that for most of the years I've been up here. We've gotten good value out of that. So I think it's prudent in these days. We're going to be needing to have a voice up there for our needs with the aftermath of the virus, and I think it's up to us to make them deliver what we're looking for.
Thank you, Mr. Britton. Mr. Chudnow?
I would tend to agree. Right now, I know they helped secure some letters of, from our senators for the COPS grant. I think those are important. It's having that voice up there, and I agree with what Mr. Britton says. I think they've shown the value of it over the years.
All right. So for me, the, when I came on to council, the big discussion item was FEMA, FEMAID, and trying to get FEMA reimbursement for some of the issues that we've had. They were instrumental in working with FEMA and the state in trying to get the money back. They got the money to the state level, now it's up to the state to get it to the next step. So they were working on that. They are also working right now on these two grants. We've got a third grant that we're putting in, and then if the second stimulus package goes through, there's a possibility for funds to be directly provided through grants to the local governments instead of going straight to the state. So right now, especially with the amount of funds that can be released at the federal level, I would hate to terminate our lobbying efforts in Washington. This is for six months. It's $30,000. The amount of money, the possibilities of the amount of money that we can get back out of Washington far exceed that. And I'm with you on the fact that if they don't produce anything, then I'm done. But they've helped in the past, and there's a lot of things that they're working on right now. The other thing is, is that we got to make sure that we stay on top of them, and we bring stuff to them. If we're not bringing stuff to them, then they have nothing to work on. As long as we keep their level of workload up, then we'll be able to, we should be able to see benefit from it. If we don't, then, you know, I have no problem terminating the contract in the future. But I think right now, we need to move forward and extend this contract with everything going on, all the funds that are being released up there, to give us the opportunity to get some money back to the city in order to keep the city whole during all this time. As you heard from the auditors, that there's going to be some impacts, and I want to make sure that we're able to, one, quantify them on our level, and two, be able to, if there's an opportunity from a federal level, to be able to get that money back. So that's where I'm at on it right now. So.
Mr. Chairman?
Anything else?
Yes. If I could address some of the things brought up as benefits to having them. One was the Army Corps. We need somebody to advocate with the Army Corps for us. Now, the state and the Army Corps already interact very, very intricately. When this body previously voted to get involved with these people, I ended up meeting with Stephanie Murphy by myself to talk about Lake Jessup, which is located outside city limits. I think it's incredibly important to us, even though it's outside city limits. And we were able to isolate the main problem and talk with State Senator Simmons and Stephanie Murphy to help resolve the issue. And the issue was, there is a problem with the definition of, not F-word, now I'm forgetting the name of it. So you scoop out muck from the water, and when it drips back in, the discharge, that's the word, so that drips in there. The other issue, so there are two issues, was also, we need to get one of the cooks out of the kitchen. So at the state level, the FDEP and Army Corps have already resolved and decided that the FDEP is able to act without the Corps being involved. So while there may be some kind of special funding that could be brought back specific to Lake Jessup, which is outside city limits, and the county is already working on using our taxes, because we pay both county taxes and city taxes, it does not seem like something where we need a special, we're a city of 41,000. I don't know of any other city in our county that has a federal-level lobbyist. We are special, and we are the only ones doing this. We have also the state-level legislature trying to bring money back. So this is like the city of Okeechobee saying, we need to have a federal-level lobbyist to go lobby the Army Corps of Engineers to help restore the Everglades. Well, don't we all know, even though we live far away from Lake Okeechobee, we know that this is a priority for the entire state? I believe that Lake Jessup is also on the impaired body water list, and it is also a priority for the entire state. So they're advocating already. And to Councilmember Chudnow's point, that these guys got our senators to write letters of support. I bet you a million dollars that if any of us would have asked them to write a letter of support, all of them would have done it within, you know, 24, 48-hour turnaround time. The final thing is the FEMA reimbursement. I'm extremely concerned that we continue to believe that somehow these lobbyists, who have not been able to get a single law changed at the federal level on our behalf, are going to be able to make us be an exception to the rule. So for anybody who's watching on YouTube or wherever you may be watching, here's the situation. We were paid money through reimbursement money through FEMA. A little bit later, the federal-level government came back and said, we gave you too much. We need you to give it back. So it flows from the federal level to the state, the state to us, and when the feds claw back from the state, the state goes and claws back from us. So they are holding up money from, I can't remember which storm it is, but, and I don't want to put Mr. Kelly on the spot, because you kind of get the idea. We are needing to give back money, and the thought is, well, if we hire these guys for $30,000, somehow they are going to change the rules for just us, just our little city of 41,000 people, and everybody else is going to have clawbacks, but not us, because we're going to hire these lobbyists who, first off, one of their principal partners has lied to my ear. It was a phone conversation, so I have a problem with that. You have to impeccably trust any lobbyist with whom you're interacting, that trust that that person's telling you the truth. If I don't trust that our own lobbyist is telling me the truth, why would any person to whom this lobbyist goes trust that he is telling the truth there either? And I'm afraid I've already told all of our people up and down the chain of command that I do not like these lobbyists, because, you know, back in May 2018, I felt the inclination to call and find out would they answer the phone for me, and yes, they all answered the phone for me, making me think even in May 2018, that we did not need to go to Washington, DC to see them, and that we should not continue a federal lobbying contract. So all of the reasons that you guys have given for why you personally want to keep them, and it's three different members giving three different reasons, all of them are, if you just look at the actual way that federal government works, they are not valid, and it's sort of an affront to our senators and to our higher elected officials to say that they're not going to look out for us, or that they would not write us a letter for our grant. I have faith in those who are elected to hire office, that are senators, our state senator, our state House reps, all of them are looking out for us, and we don't need this investment.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr.?
If my reason isn't valid, why the heck was there a committee formed for the friends of Lake Jessup, and then why was a council person placed on that committee?
It's a state requirement that this committee be formed because it was so dirty. So the state is so.
But still, the city did it. The city did it, and the committee has been in existence, although dormant for a while. And once I got information about what was going on, I was appalled. And so I assumed, when I volunteered for that committee, that it was something that the citizens of Oviedo thought was prudent for us to still be involved in. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, if it's not something that's prudent for us to still be involved in, then why am I on that committee? I hear your reason, but why am I on there? It is a valid reason that I want the people to look into the Corps of Army Engineers and find out what they can do to assist us with Lake Jessup, although outside the city, it affects our city, and I think most people would say that, yes, they want the lake cleaned up. They've been saying it. That's what people on the committee are saying. So I have to disagree with your assessment of whether my reason is valid or not. I disagree with that assessment.
Mr. Britton?
Yeah, Mr. Hall, could you answer a question for me that, I guess, the mayor opined that we had personal reasons for doing this, and then called the lobbyist a liar. Could that be considered libelous on her part, and should we?
I've already written that. I wrote that when I was on council, that I believed them to be dishonest.
So do we need to say that that's her personal opinion and not ours as a council?
The record should reflect that, yes.
Okay. All right. As a point of order, a vote against this motion is a vote to approve the contract, correct?
Well, vote against this motion, then the motion will fail, and then we need to have another motion for the contract if we wanted it.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Is there anybody else? Okay. The thing that I spoke about earlier that I want to reiterate is, there's still a lot of money in DC that's going to be released with the stimulus packages. I know the first one didn't have money directly to the cities, the local governments, but there's going to be money available if the second one passes, and I don't want to lose that opportunity to obtain that, some of those funds for our city. There's a lot of potential there, and we've got a lot of impact, we've had a lot of impact from this virus, and we're going to need to, you know, find ways to recover it, and I hate to give up that opportunity. And so for the $30,000, for the six months that we're voting on, we have an opportunity to regain some of the impact from that, from the COVID-19, and to get it from the stimulus packages. So that, to me, is far more important than, you know, worrying about the $30,000 for the six months. I think trying to get that bigger piece of the pie that's out there, we need to hold on to them, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Madam Mayor.
It sounds like everybody but me is excited about continuing a federal lobbying contract. I would propose that it might be prudent for all of us to consider who has the best reputation and the greatest success rate as a federal lobbyist. I suggested that back a couple of years ago, and the thought from at least one council member was that these guys take us to the Congressional Dining Room when we get there, and it's a very neat experience. I think it would be better to, given my personal interaction with these guys, to switch lobbyists.
Okay. All right. All right. Is there anybody else? Okay. The motion on the table is to deny Resolution 3914-20. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion fails. Do I have a motion, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 3914-20.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chudnow?
I move we approve Resolution Number 3914-20.
Second. Got a motion in a second? Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve Resolution 3914-20, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries 4-1. All right. We are now on to, I believe we're on to reports. Yep. No discussion items. Okay. So we're on to reports. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. One of the things I just wanted to call to your attention, it's down in future meeting dates, what we'd like to do in the month of June, is June 1st, is to have a budget workshop on that date rather than a regular meeting. Because of the pandemic, we haven't been able to have a budget workshop with you. As Mr. Booth alluded to during his presentation, we've been struggling trying to get the information that we need to really wrap this thing up, and we've been conducting meetings with the various departments and learning about the things that they want to do next year, and then trying to balance that with the unknown of what the impact of the pandemic is going to be. One of the things, too, in preparing for that, Mr. Booth and the staff will be contacting you to meet with you individually to go over what we found so far, so that when you get into the workshop, that you'll have a base knowledge of what we're going to talk about, and hopefully have a better discussion. And then on June 15th, we'll do our regular meeting like normal. And then on June 15th, we'll do our regular meeting like normal. And then also, in talking with Mr. Axel, he would like to also have a CRA meeting on that date as well, so that we can have the folks from CPA's come in and present their findings on the work they've been doing on the downtown master plan. So I just wanted to call that to your attention as something that's not, you know, we're still sort of, still sort of in that COVID-19 mode of, but we wanted to have that opportunity. We felt like June 1st was a good opportunity for us to bring that budget workshop to you.
Okay. June 15th, I will be out. I'm going to be on vacation for that date.
Who's going to be the chairman then?
You're it.
You.
Am I allowed? I don't know, guys.
Pretty much, that's the language in the charter, is that you're the deputy mayor when we're in the meeting, so you'll take over. That's all I have, Deputy Mayor.
All right, okay, moving on. Mr. Hall, do you have anything?
There we go, I think we're on now. Yeah, some time ago, before the pandemic, we talked about, the council talked about the golf course, and you asked me to look into the restrictions and so forth and so on. I've had the opportunity to do that. It was not a priority, and I apologize to the council with all the COVID crisis going on, but I did have title search. The only restriction currently of record against the golf course was from the original owner, who conveyed to the company that built the golf course, and that was that Rollins College golf team would be permitted to practice at the course and maintain it practically if they so desired. There are no other restrictions of record. Now, as far as restrictions, the golf course itself, the golf course is part of the Trumbers PUD. So it is PUD zoning. The PUD zoning for the golf course is golf course. So that is all it can be used for. If it were a council's desire, the council's desire to change that, it would require a number of things. The development order, the conceptual and development plan have expired. They have a life of 15 years. They were adopted in 1988. So those would not be valid. We would have to go through the process. We would also be required to go through a comp plan amendment, and which would involve the Florida DCA, which probably would not like this changing. The other issue we're faced with is the property is located in what's called the Econ River Corridor Protection Zone, which limits development to, no development within the first 1,100 feet of the river. Then there's an additional 550 feet along the way, and then there's upland buffers that are required. So if we did decide on development, the density at this point would be limited to one density unit per 10 acres. So, and there would be no economies of trying to redevelop the golf course. So currently, it could be used for hiking trails, boardwalks, fishing piers, observation towers, city parks. But as far as trying to convert it to something else, we did have, one of the owners at the time of the golf course in 2015, and is probably remembered, wanted to develop, put a development out there. They claimed vesting of the original development order, which already expired, that was denied. Staff recommended denial. Our LPA denied it. They appealed to the board. The council, for the specific vesting, the council made a decision not to grant the vesting, so they denied it as well. So subsequent to that, the next year is when the city bought the golf course. So since that time, the city has operated it, and as it stands right now, there's really no alternative use that the property can be put to without a major, major undertaking and probably significant opposition to DCA. So the council really has to call on the property, how it's operated, and so forth.
So when the previous owner said, "We have rights to do X, Y, Z," that simply was not correct?
That was not correct.
So if we had simply done a title search before we purchased it, we would have known then that it could only be used as a golf course all along?
That is correct. Well, no, I mean, I'm sure it came up with the title, well, no, the title search wouldn't reflect that. Those things aren't reflected in title search. You have to investigate the existence of the development order, the PUD zoning and so forth, and the conceptual development plan, development order, good for a period of 15 years. So it can be used in golf courses, what the city bought it for. I don't think the city had intentions of doing anything else. And I'm assuming, I wasn't involved, obviously, I'm assuming they were trying to prevent it from, the developer, the owner was probably going under, and was either going to abandon it or walk away or something. And so the city, I assume, took it over at that point to save it for the residents. And the other significant use of the golf course is in connection with the stormwater system. So if we have a major event, the golf course floods, as opposed to the rest of the city flooding.
Can I make one correction? That the owner of the golf course owned the course, and they were the ones that wanted to develop it. They weren't really going under, they were driving the course to go under, but the reason that we bought the golf course was to avoid a multi-year, multimillion-dollar legal battle that they were prepared to take us to. And the price we paid was about half of what they were asking for. They were asking $12 million, I think we paid them somewhere around $5 million, so just wanted to make that correction.
Okay, thanks, sir. Thank you. All right, moving along. Councilmember Chudnow.
I don't have my, I've been, during the stay-at-home orders and everything being closed, I've been participating in a lot of the Oviedo Winter Springs Chamber Zoom meetings. They have been very informative. It's been great, it's their ability to reach out to their members and give them a lot of information, not just on COVID-19, but what's going on in the state, what's going on in the city, as far as the businesses go. The only thing I would like to thank all our staff members, the police, fire department, public works, for being on the front lines working and keeping the city working despite everything else that was going on.
Thank you. All right, councilmembers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would also, I would first love to thank the citizens of Oviedo for striving to make the best of a very difficult situation. This is an almost unprecedented event in human history, and yet you have continued to place one foot in front of the other, and continue to take care of yourselves and your families. Please remember that you can do your due diligence and research for yourselves ways that you can take care of yourselves during this situation. And please remember to practice social distancing. The next part I wrote because I had a letter from a citizen that disturbed me. There are many food banks throughout the area, I want to remind our citizens, and food is available. We thank all those who have made these services available throughout our community. Please reach out if you cannot access food resources. I got a letter from a citizen who stated that she was not eating herself in order to make sure her two children were eating. And it astounded me that she didn't know about all the food banks available. And so I want to reiterate, please, there are so many food banks available. And if you're not sure where they're located, please reach out, please email me, or call me, and I'll let you know where they are, but there's food available. Nobody should starve. We thank all of those who made these services available. You can also call United Way at 211. It's an information and referral line, and they can refer you to almost anything. I know that this situation has been emotionally draining. It's been a trying time for all, but please do not be afraid to reach out if you're overwhelmed. Please do not feel ashamed, because there are resources available for you. Please do not be afraid to admit you have difficulty, especially if you don't have food. That can be provided. We all are being affected in one way or another, and you are not alone. To the staff of the city of Oviedo, I would like to thank you for your dedication and hard work during our current situation. I know that this has been emotionally draining, and you are tasked with providing services to our community, even in the midst of this fight with this invisible enemy of human life on this earth, and yet you persevere, and I appreciate you, and pray for you all by name and face. And I have a brief editorial. We've been presented with an almost unique situation in human history, or so it seems. But a very wise man wrote, "There's nothing new under the sun. You elect me to represent you in matters concerning the operation of the city government or the system by which a community decides to live under. In my oath of office, I pledge to defend the Constitution against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and I pledge this on the word of God of Israel and a new covenant of the sacrifice of Jesus of Nazareth. I am able to perform my duties outlined in my oath of office because of my belief in the God of Israel. What we're facing today will not be resolved by human solutions. Only the God of the universe can provide for us. We're at a time of decision for mankind. The next months may be a bit difficult as we go back, getting online, charting a new course, so that you can earn a living for you and your families, and keep yourself as safe as possible. As I said, some decisions as we go forward are going to have to be made. A man who was tasked to lead a nation after they had been redeemed from slavery in Egypt spoke of decisions he made during the difficult time in past human history. I'm echoing the same words today, uttered by Joshua, the son of Man from the tribe of Ephraim, who was the son of Joseph. Ephraim was adopted by Jacob, called Israel, and he said, "If it seems evil unto you to serve the Lord, choose ye this day whom ye will serve, whether the gods which your fathers served that were on the other side of the flood, or the gods of the Amorites, in whose land ye dwell. But as for me and my house, we will serve the Lord." Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, moving along. Mayor Sladek.
Police and Fire, y'all are rocking it with all the parades, birthday parades, graduation parades. Thank you so much for that. It is cheering up people who are, whether you are the birthday person, or the graduate, or you are just a neighbor, it is humans, humans who are not related to you, who come to your house. So thank you for helping bring a little bit of sanity and humanity to this whole thing. That's all I got.
All right. Councilmember Britton.
Real quick, one item, and then I've got a comment. I got a call from Mary Panda, who runs the Oviedo City Life Magazine, and she's starting a program to, it's kind of a cool program where she's getting businesses, I think they've designed a T-shirt with a logo, Oviedo Strong or something on it, and is looking for support to have a community unity event, I guess, and she's going to make it part of her next issue of the magazine. Brian, I don't know if she called you or not, but she gave me kind of a briefing on it. I thought it was a cool idea, and I thought it would be a good idea if the city could somehow participate in what she's got going on.
I can give you an update. Mary and I have been talking, and we're, this next issue coming up, which is the August, September issue, we have a, we're scheduled for a one-page ad. Normally, we would use that to advertise our Oktoberfest event, which, fingers crossed, that's going to be our welcome back event. And I think it's very appropriate, because it's multi-days, so we can have a real celebration. The name of the program is called Local First, Local Strong. The idea that she would like us to do is to purchase T-shirts for each of you, and to have pictures made wearing the T-shirts. So half of the page would be city council promoting Local First, Local Strong, and then the other half of the ad would be for Oktoberfest. And so that's the idea that we've been working on so far, and so the T-shirts are $20. I think we can swing that.
I think part of the program with the other businesses is, I think the T-shirts were $20, and $10 would go to pay for the T-shirt.
It goes back, $10 goes back to the business.
Yeah, the $10, other $10, in my mind, we could use that extra $10 to go to Relay for Life or something.
Right, we could do that as well. So, but that's the idea that we have going on right now. She's got a lot of ideas on that half-page, so we'll work with her on getting the T-shirts. We'll work with her on setting up the time. She does, we don't want to do a group picture, we'll do individual pictures, and then she'll do something as far as, you know, laying out the advertisement, and then the other half-page will use for Oktoberfest.
Okay, thanks. And then I just want to say something. We are in a unique situation here. It's not unique to mankind, it's just unique to us. And I was just sitting here thinking, I said, you know, you can go back and, and I think they were taking the lessons of the 1918 epidemic that killed millions. And they did quarantine and do what we're calling distance, social distancing, but it still affected the world. There's some of us up here that lived through a very similar epidemic called polio, that killed millions in the '30s, '40s, and '50s. And it took them 20 years to get a vaccine to eventually eradicate it. They didn't eradicate it until the '90s, but it still exists. So the fact that we're going to get a vaccine maybe in a year or two is 100 times faster than what they used to do. And I think, you know, you can say what you want about projections, but I think the projections are correct. The projections are, here's what's going to happen if you don't implement some changes and do it quickly, and if you do, that's what, there'll be a lot less of an impact. So we traded, we traded an environment or economic impact for a lifesaving impact. So I think we're doing the right thing. We had this meeting a couple weeks ago where we're going to go a little slow as a city and open up the parks. Businesses can do what they want. I kind of wish I can go work out, but my gym isn't open yet, but I can still ride a bike and I can still run. So I guess my message is, is keep on doing what we're doing, and keep the faith. We're not out of the woods, but we will eventually be out of the woods, and we'll be back. Life will be as good as it ever was, so that's all I have.
All right, thank you. So I had a couple items. First one was the reclaimed water system failure to the northeast section of town. It impacted, I guess it impacted the Live Oak, well, it's currently impacting Live Oak Sanctuary and the Orleans Landing neighborhoods. Some residents have reached out to find out if there's anything the city can do from a financial standpoint, from their bill. My thought was, or my question was, is there a way we can help in the fact that we can prorate their customer charge for reclaimed water? If they're not receiving the service, and they're paying for a customer charge, you know, should we prorate that for the amount of time that they're out? So I didn't know if there's a...
I think that messes with the bonds. We can't charge different people different rates. I don't know, that's a Mr. Boop question. And we could have had $30,000 as a relief fund, but now we're giving that to lobbyists.
Mr. Cobb, do you have any thoughts on that?
We've discussed it, because we understand. We've got some things, we are looking through our various ordinances, because our programs were created by ordinance, so there are things that we have to make sure that we're not violating. Doing so will violate ordinances, that's first. Mayor makes a good point, too. We also have to look at, does this impact our bonds? One of the things that, throughout this, is that what it forces people to do is to irrigate with potable water. When you irrigate with potable water, when you use more water, it's a sliding scale rate structure, so the more water you use, the higher your rate is. You also have a sewer charge on top of it. And the fact is, is that the water's not going through the sewer system, but you're getting charged for it. So we have to work, that's where the bond's coming. We have to work through those issues of, can we do it by, make sure we don't violate ordinances, and then make sure that we don't mess ourselves up with any of the bond covenants as well. If we can find it, and that's one of the things that, you know, Mr. Boop and the finance folks are looking at, if we can find a way to do it, we'll do it. And so we're looking at that. Mr. Wyatt and I went out to the site last Friday, and if you can imagine, the pipe's 18 inches in diameter.
18 inches in diameter, okay? So, I mean, it's roughly this big. And it's 20 feet long. And if you've ever been on a dock after going out fishing, you've seen how they fillet the fish, well, it looks like somebody filleted the entire top of that pipe off.
Really?
That's how.
Did someone with like a backhoe or something pull it?
I don't know. The good news is, the pipe isn't as deep as we thought it is. The bad news is, is that it's setting in the slope of the roadway, so it's not easy to get to. But we've found, an 18-inch pipe is not common. Most of the time, it's 24. That's usually a more common size, 36-inch. But we have found 18-inch pipe. It's en route. Our contractor, Jordan Brothers, who's doing Solory Park in our regional stormwater pond, they can do it, they can repair that, which is great. And so hopefully, we'll get the materials, like I said, they're en route, and we're expecting them tomorrow, Wednesday, and then we can get them working on it. I was, when Mr. Wyatt took me down there, I couldn't believe what I saw. I mean, it just looked like somebody just sliced the top of that pipe off. It must have been a really, somewhat of an explosion when it happened. And it's cracked on both ends, so we're going to have to, they'll have to even take the, where it connects to the two pipes before and after, they're going to have to be worked on there as well. So it's a pretty, pretty bad situation out there.
Did somebody do it? Or do we think that?
We've heard, we've heard that there was utility companies doing work out there.
There was, about a month ago, there were workers on the bridge.
Right.
Doing work. Then they were cutting into the concrete on the bridge. So I don't know if...
And this, I've heard, has been going on for weeks.
This is on the east side of the bridge.
Yeah, and that's where they were doing the work.
So I...
Bobby, sir.
Yeah. Bobby, if you want to come up and give an update.
This is the most pressing issue in all of Oviedo right now.
It's pretty quick. I'm watching on the screen in another room, I come running in here when I hear the going. So it's a little bit of a delay, so catch me up on like the last 10 seconds that I missed.
I was just explaining to you.
The slice.
I was telling them about when you and I went out on Friday, and I was saying it looked like somebody took a fillet knife and sliced the top off.
That's actually a very good, accurate representation of what it looks like. I mean, literally split on the whole 20-foot section of pipe, split across the top. So I've never seen one like that before. But, you know, it was installed in the mid-'90s, best I can guess. Utilities Incorporated had it installed. But best I can figure is when Live Oak went in, developer-driven project brought it out. But I don't know if Mr. Cobb mentioned, there's another problem out there as well that we noticed in investigating the pipe, is that the pipe, you know, it's underground, and it comes up and it hangs on the bottom of the bridge as it goes over the river. And I actually have a picture I can show you afterwards, that that pipe, one of the hangers that holds it on, broke off. And that pipe is deflected, it's hanging there. I mean, it's not going to fall off, it's not, there's no endangerment like that, but it's deflected. So the concern is, once the pipe is repaired, when we pressurize that thing back up to 90 PSI, that something could happen, and we don't want that to happen. So we have to wait until that bridge pipe is fixed before we can pressurize that line. So yeah, they can come fix the pipe tomorrow or the next day, but until we get that, and that conversation has already started with other contractors. Jordan Brothers can't fix the bridge. It's such a something they don't do. But we have found other contractors that can, one was already on site today. But they have to do due diligence, they have to price the repair and then let us know. So yeah, the pipe can get fixed in a couple days, but unfortunately, it's going to take a little bit longer to get that bridge piece fixed. So I just wanted to let y'all know, there's more to it than just fixing the pipe, so that, just in case people start saying, why isn't...
What do you think is the timeline to get the bridge and everything?
Week and a half.
Week and a half?
Week, week and a half.
Oh, okay. So like, it's raining?
No, we're not talking months, but if the bridge pipe, if something happened on that bridge pipe, we're talking months. We don't want that to happen.
Yeah, so that's...
No, we need to take our time, get this done methodically, and get it, and pray for rain.
And that's the thing, is that, what we were noticing is that as it comes up, it comes up the bridge of Butmann, but then what it does, it makes a turn, and then it makes a second turn. And so you've got those connections there, and then it starts to go down. We were both sitting there looking at, if those connections weaken, we'd really be in trouble.
Do you have another pipe to rectify it?
Yes.
You know, straighten it out?
That one is just pipe hangers, just need these new pipe hangers and restrain on it.
I think that's just replacement.
The S-curve you're describing.
Oh, no, they're in good shape. They look good.
Wait, fix that, make it straight?
Oh, it really...
No, it doesn't need it. It's okay, it's just a...
It helps get it into the, underneath the railing of the bridge. But we, that bracket, we were both, I mean, it is just completely disconnected from the bridge itself. And so, yeah, we were, that was something we were both looking up at it, going, oh, yes, this is mess.
Are you investigating, or do we have insurance to pay for this? Or are we investigating the contractors?
Oh, that's from the mid-'90s. I don't even have, we can't even find plans for it. I mean, it's that old. This is way after we purchased it.
I mean, the cause, is there a candidate contractor?
Oh, absolutely, yes, sir. There's actually two, we've already had discussion. One was on site today, one's coming out tomorrow.
Well, no, I think you were investigating.
I'm talking about who could have possibly caused this.
Oh, have caused it?
Yeah.
Repair is probably just material failure on the pipe.
Okay.
And on the bridge, it probably just, it just happens.
So it wasn't a backhoe, you don't think?
Nobody, nobody hit it, no, sir. Where it was, where it was down in the ground, nobody's been there.
Okay. All right. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right.
From the financial perspective of it, Mr. Boop is already starting to look into, as you said, looking at the ordinances that created the programs, and then also looking at the covenants, make sure we don't get sideways with that. Our hope is, is that in a week and a half, we have good news.
Do you need a consensus from council to move forward with that, if it's possible?
I don't think we do at this time.
Okay.
I think we can, I think, as long as, once we figure it out, then we can come back. If we need to come back, we'll come back.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Cobb.
Just need your blessing to get it fixed as fast as I can.
All right.
Go Team Go.
Yes. So I just want to reiterate what the mayor was saying about the parades, and just the great job that, I mean, we had that first responder parade that went through the hospitals. We've had, you know, birthday parades, senior parades. The person that's been coordinating, coordinating them, at least, you know, that I've worked with is Officer Roberts. He's done a great job, he's been very friendly. Everybody that's been involved, working with him, has spoken very highly of him. I just want to reiterate and, you know, and show my appreciation to him. And then all the other police officers that were working those parades, as well as the firefighters that came out, and the rest of the city staff that was there. I mean, it was, they were great. I mean, it just really brings that, kind of that Oviedo Strong back to the community. I mean, seeing everybody coming out. I mean, the Live Oak Parade, I mean, that thing was, that was a long parade that went through there. Especially when we got caught up in a couple of the cul-de-sacs, and there was a car parked on the side, trying to get around a fire truck, and, yeah, it was a lot of fun. But that was great. And I just want to reiterate and, you know, show my appreciation for all of what you guys do on that. I already told you that I'm going to be on vacation for the June 15th meeting. And then, just want to reiterate and show my thanks to Parks and Recs and the rest of the city staff on, you know, planning and implementing the phased approach that we discussed last week to reopening the city. I believe the pool should have been open today, correct? So, do we have a lot of swimmers?
I don't know. I haven't talked with Mr. Bowery yet. We'll find out tomorrow.
I did run into Charlie Rose the other day, and he gives us his highest compliments and thanks us for that. In fact, he was with two coaches from Seminole County Schools, and they're not opening, and they're very upset that they can't get action. So, but Charlie is very happy with the way we've handled it. They've got a good plan, and they're going to do good work with it.
Awesome. Awesome. Great. And then to the finance department, you know, great job on the audit. I know it wasn't easy, especially with everything else going on and social distancing, and I don't know if y'all were working from home trying to put this stuff together as well, but great job on the audit and the opinion and the financials. I mean, the cash position, I mean, the way that's moved up for us in the reserves and the fund balance, I mean, that's just, our financials look great and strong, and I'm hoping that the impact from all this isn't going to just crush them, because we're in such a great position. I know, I spoke with you, Mr. Boop, before, and we were talking about financials and how we were so concerned about a storm. Well, here it was. It was just in a different, it was in a different way. So, but we're moving forward. Hopefully, we can, we can, you know, keep those financials and the position that they're in. We're doing a great job. You know, I just, you know, I don't, anybody that says that we're not, isn't looking at what we're looking at. I mean, they're just in great position. And then I just want to, you know, lastly, I just want to thank the city staff as a whole for keeping the city running during this time. I know it wasn't easy. I know, I mean, some, you know, I was speaking to the assistant city manager, and, you know, his wife gives him, you know, a total desanitation before he walks into the, into the house. You know, and, you know, my wife does the same thing. I mean, it's just real, everybody's being very careful and cautious, and I know it's difficult to come to work and, you know, and work in this type of an environment, and you all are doing a great job keeping everything running as smoothly as possible. So I just appreciate it, and thank you very much. And that's all I had. Does anybody else have anything for the good of the order? All right, hearing none. The time is now 8:09. I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.